Six thirty one, actually. Need to get started. I see that we have a quorum of the city council in the room. And I will call the meeting, the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item up on our agenda is approval of our consent agenda. Today, we have vouchers totaling three hundred fifty one thousand, four hundred sixty nine dollars, forty nine cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding those vouchers? Then we have minutes from our July twenty five, twenty twenty three and August first, twenty twenty three meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve our consent agenda as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman by moves.
Second.
Councilman Driggers seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And we now come to our first public comment opportunity. And I see we do have members of the public in the room. Is there somebody here that would like to address the council? Mr. Grabs? If you'd come stand here at the podium, we'd appreciate it. That way you'll be on camera for a guest.
Preaching.
You can preach it if you need to.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come and share just a minute. I've lived in Hillsborough since October. I was back, I was here before in two thousand, two thousand eight. But I hadn't experienced this last week, and I just wanna here with you. And really brag on our city of Hill. As the storm moved through the other day, I had a one big tree in my backyard. I live on two oh seven East State. And a big Liam came down. And as it came down, it came and rested on my neighbor's shed. At the same time it came down, it got into my electrical wires. And so I called the city and I don't, I'm not, not sure of the name, I think Jason. It's Jason. Jason was there, come shorty, and he said, well, Don, he says, we've had some reports of houses are out of power and some poles are down. Not sure when you'll be able to get it here. But he said, well, do your best. And I know it wasn't over an hour. Here come two bucket trucks from the city. Heard the saws go. And they had that complete tree, big branch, and it was a little about that size, cut up in pieces. And they just didn't leave it there. They took it, threw it over my backyard fence into the right edge of the alley. And then yesterday, or Monday, Monday, they, they were there, cleaned it all up, three big piles and moved it away. So I just wanna say, city council, I really appreciate the staff you have. And I've lived in several cities in Kansas, but I've never had this kind of quick response and the dedication they have to making the city of Hillsborough more and nicer than this. If you can, treat them great, treat them great, both the guys on the bucket, bucket trucks as well as the. That's all I got to say, but just thank you again, appreciate it. And I also had one thing too, you may remember. I, I really, I, I really enjoy my law and attorney team. And Lou was right there in the midst of all of our new student orientation, welcome students, and I've heard so many students, and I've never been treated like this before. You know, there is real benefits of living in a small community. That people really care about their communities. That's all I got.
We appreciate you too, Don, and thanks for taking the time to come down here. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, unfortunately, so often we hear the negative side of things and, and you know, it's uncommon, but, but it's very appreciated. Somebody come down and bless us like that, so. We appreciate that. So is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Is there anyone online? Doesn't look like it. So with, with hearing no one else, ready to address the, the council, we will close our first public comment opportunity and we will move in to a very exciting recognition. And we are proclaiming the, well, I'll just read the proclamation. How's that? So this is a proclamation of the city of Hillsborough, Kansas. There's a lot of these whereas's in there, so bear with me. Whereas the twenty twenty three Hillsborough Marion Center Co-op High School Girl Swimming Team roster includes Hillsborough Swimmers, Amesley Duel, Trudy Hine, Talia Jost, Violet Klein, Tanner Platt, Marin Reed, Gabby Sabayan, Claudia Suhu, and Lauren Vogt. And whereas the. Whereas Hillsborough Swimmers, Amesley Duel, Talia Jost, Violet Klein, Tanner Platt, and Lauren Vogt qualified for the twenty twenty three Class Five dash one A State Swimming Championships. And whereas on May nineteen through twenty, twenty twenty three, Hillsborough Trojans competed in the state Kansas State High School Activities Association Girls Class Five dash one A State Swimming Championships. As a team, the Trojans finished eleventh overall in the state. And whereas the two hundred yard freestyle relay team with swimmers Amesley Duel, Tanner Platt, Talia Jost, and Lauren Vogt finished fifth with a time of one minute forty, is it one minute forty-four seconds? Okay. And whereas Lauren Vogt finished third in the hundred yard butterfly with a time of fifty-eight fifteen. And whereas Lauren Vogt finished first in the fifty yard freestyle with a time of twenty-three point nine two seconds, claiming the past five state championship for both. In the team, and whereas Lauren Vogt finished in the top twenty-five list for swimmers in the state and was named to the Kansas Swim and Dive All-State Team. Now, therefore, needed resolve that the mayor and the city council of the city of Hillsborough jointly honor the success of the Hillsborough High School Girl Swimming Team for their success in the twenty twenty three season and to recognize the achievement of Lauren Vogt for winning the twenty twenty three Kansas State High School Athletic Activities Association Girls Class Five dash one A Fifty Yard Freestyle Championship. The mayor and Hill and council to hereby proclaim Tuesday, August fifteen, twenty twenty three, as Trojan Girls Swimming and Lauren Vogt State Championship Day in the city of Hillsborough and encourage all citizens to join in this observance. So Lauren, I'd like to present you this proclamation and congratulations. You guys hold it, I'll step back.
Thank you.
Thank you, very welcome. Well done, well done. You made Hillsborough proud, and I know you made your parents proud. And your coach.
Few years ago, yeah.
Yeah.
We don't need to listen to you. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a proclamation recognizing Public Power Week as October one through seven, twenty twenty three. And.
You wanna read that whole?
Probably not. So we are proclaiming Public Power Week again, and as everybody may or may not remember, we have a big, huge trophy that we're defending this year, so there's a lot of, of work to be done if we think we're gonna keep it. So I know Matt and his team are, are already on it and are in it to win it.
For it to win it.
Uh, next up is a, a annual department head report from Chief Jesse Hebert from our police department. Chief Hebert, take the podium, please.
Last year, I had the big PowerPoint tip forever, so. Won't take up so much of your time this year, but last year's PowerPoint did include case stats, I think it was only six months worth. So this year, Randy Brazel compiled a year, so we're going June twenty-two to June twenty-three. And I just kinda want you to, to know what your department does for you. So I wanna go through these, it's got some numbers and an explanation of the type of calls that we deal with on a daily basis. So the first one is civil complaints, and annually we had two hundred and eight of those. And those calls include welfare checks, EMS calls, property disputes, runaway juveniles, fingerprinting, and civil standbys. Uh, civil, uh, excuse me, criminal complaints, four hundred and fifty-five. Uh, these calls for service include criminal complaints and cases that are sent to the county attorney for prosecution. These cases also include complaints that the victim does not want anything done. So we still go ahead and investigate crime, takes a victim for it to go to court. If the victim doesn't wanna be a victim, then it doesn't go to the county attorney's office for prosecution. It's handled the same way. Uh, investigations and reports, one thousand eighty-five. These calls for service include report writing, alarm calls, nine-one-one hangups, and follow-up investigations, as well as drug investigations and outside agency assists. We're, we're gonna track that down. We're gonna find out at least who had the phone when it happened. The interesting thing is with our new phones, and iPhone is definitely one of them, because it happened to me, if you hit a combination of the side buttons, uh, it will automatically call nine-one-one. So we, we deal with a lot of that till people understand how to use their phones, but uh, a lot of, a lot of nine-one-one hangups, and we'll go to every one of them, because we don't wanna miss actual emergency. Uh, traffic, five hundred and thirty. This would be accident investigations, traffic stops, parking complaints, driving complaints, animal complaints, two hundred and thirty. Uh, that would be our dogs at large, our dogs barking, our registration violations, things like that. Public relations, uh, that would be a seven hundred and twenty. And that's calls including officer training, uh, patrolling the schools, which is, you know, schools getting ready to start back up, so uh, not having a school resource officer. Um, and we have officers that are free, we try to get onto campus daily. And that's something we did last year already, and we're gonna continue to do that. Uh, also get onto Tabor Campus, uh, and communications with Chris Williams, the Criminal Justice Department there. Uh, was there a couple times last year, like to get in there a few more times, it was guest speaker in there a few times, so like to get back in there and do that again, but that's an example of that. Um, the Alice Training, we've been all over doing that, that's picking back up again. Uh, actually, on days off, I was asked by uh, the chief judge in our district to go and put that class on in, in all the courthouses in, in the Eighth Judicial District. So I, I completed that, did that again off duty, but representing the Hillsborough Police Department. Um, so we had a total service load in that year of three thousand two hundred and twenty-eight calls. Our criminal cases, uh, cut, set to the attorney, so the county attorney, those are actual cases for prosecution, was seventy-three, the service rendered reports, uh, were ninety-four. And our accident reports actually went down in that twelve-month timeframe of thirty-six. So that's just a little bit of case data for the last year. Uh, wanted to also mention that we were fortunate enough to have Dwayne McCarty, uh, along with four other people, apply for Peyton Hyderbrick's position. Peyton's moved on to the Sheriff's Department. And it's, we're pretty picky as far as who we want to come work here. And just extremely fortunate to have Dwayne apply. Uh, he has forty-six years of combined experience. He worked in Florence, I believe, starting in seventy-seven, somewhere in there, part-time status. Ran that all the way up until two thousand three, two thousand four, he went to the academy, he's worked for the Sheriff's Department, for Marion Police Department. He's gonna be a valuable asset. He's trained in crimes against children, uh, which is a valuable asset to have on a department. Um, he's also a dragnet instructor, which is kinda like the program lead that we use in school. Just a little different flavor. He's very excited to get into the school, so I'll probably use David Funk and Dwayne to get into the school and kinda share some of that responsibility. He's also a radar instructor. Um, our entire department, John, uh, you know, once he's been here, what, eight, nine years, give or take? Uh, him and the rest of our whole crew that have been here twenty-five to thirty have worked with McCarty his entire career. So feel very comfortable him coming here, he'll integrate well with the community. Uh, wonderful PR guy. He likes to get out and talk to people. You know, he's active with the chamber. I don't know anyone who's been down here and heard him spin his music. So he's, you know, he likes to be in the mix, so we're excited to have him come on board, so. Sort of highlights.
So how, how many years of combined experience are on the department?
A hundred and fifty. It was funny, because with, with all of us, when Dwayne bring it on forty-six, uh, we, we added that a hundred and fifty years combined experience with your, just the five full timers. So you start bringing part timers in, a lot of our part timers, they've got twenty-five years as well. So we've got some pretty good experience level on this, this agency, so it's pretty proud of that. Questions about anything? At the bottom here, I see, just so you know, uh, Randy must've got ahold of this when it was on my desk. Randy, Randy Brazel is the greatest, and I.
I thought that was, I thought that was grandpa. He was the greatest.
Well, greatest grandpa, greatest whatever, but I see it's on there, and if I wouldn't. Be whatever. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the job you do for us. Anything, give me a call.
Anything?
Anytime.
One of those three thousand.
All right, we are now on to an added item on our agenda. We have an executive session for matters related to attorney-client privilege for a period of five minutes. Does someone have that motion?
I moved at the city council recess into executive session for the purpose of consultation with the city attorney for matters privileged pursuant to KSA seven-five dash five three one nine B two for a period of five minutes. The executive session will include city administrator and city attorney. The open meeting will resume.
At six fifty-three, according to my official clock.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, that's a motion.
Second, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are now in a meeting session. Okay. We are now ready to, uh, come back into, uh, into regular session and let the record state that there was no action taken during the executive session. So now we're into items H on our agenda, which is our business items. And the first item there is ordinance one-three-seven-five, setting out-of-town trash and recycling rates. Mr. Styles?
Uh, so this is a revisit of our, our trash discussion from last time. So what we've done is we went back and put a pencil to sort of where, where that rate should be, and we took it, took it into advice, what the rate of private haulers is. And so what we, we, what we ended up coming out with was sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. We, we rounded it up a little bit, and it was actually a little bit lower than that, but to even it out, it's ten percent essentially is what it ends up being. Um, that factors in equipment and, um, you know, extra gas and some man-hours, and of course, these are all just this is speculation as far as what those numbers were. We just, we tried to do our best on guessing what that would look like, so. Um, I will say that this, this rate is still less than Waste Connections and what some of the other private haulers are offering. Uh, however, it's completely different service in a lot of ways. Uh, Waste Connections, for example, would pick up ten, ten items regardless of size every, every time they picked up, whereas we just have the poly cart. Um, and so that's, that's a change in service, pretty dramatic change in service, so. Um, so we've got proposed in the ordinance, sixteen twenty-five residential poly carts, and we, we base dumpster costs, um, directly off of that, so it, it multiplies up as you go up in size. Uh, and then it also multiplies out as you go up in frequency, so the whole table there is based kind of on that sixteen twenty-five rate. Um, we also talked about some of the things with the dumpster rentals, and so there's a fee in here, uh, associated with the delivery fees with that. And then we've got municipal policy one-on-one, which will kind of dovetail into that and then give an idea of what we're talking about with that. Uh, just so that we're, we're all pretty clear, uh, the, what we're planning on doing is, is just having those people over on one-ninetieth, uh, that residential area there, and then ag service. I got a request today from Abenfeld Church. Don't know if we're gonna look at that one or not, they're pretty far out, so. Um, but they don't need a regular service, we'll see. Uh, we're just gonna, we're gonna try to keep this as small as possible, because we do not want to be serving the county uh, in this with our, with our stuff, so. You know, it's, it's a pretty minimal price difference, I think, uh, at the end of the day, for people, it's competitive, uh, the from a revenue standpoint, I think it'll cover the extra cost. Again, we're, we're just kinda making a guess at what that'll actually be, so, uh, it's an estimate. Uh, but we're recommending of moving forward with ordinance thirteen seventy-five. Um, if we prove this, when we approve this, if we approve this, uh, the rates wouldn't take effect until the next billing cycle, so they won't see this change until September, October, it'll be October.
Are there any questions? Comments? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen seventy-five, setting out-of-town trash and recycling rates and authorize the mayor to sign.
The move.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty, seconds? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council, councilman by?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen seventy-five is hereby adopted, and the mayor will sign. Our next item is consideration of municipal policy one-zero-one, regulating rental of dumpsters. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So we kinda mentioned it in the last, uh, item, but uh, what this does is lay out the terms that we discussed at the previous meeting. Uh, so we have a two, a two-week time limit on that, customers can request uh, an extension of that, uh, every time they do that, there's, there's a minimum cost associated with that. They don't have to pay a delivery fee if they get an extension, but they do have to pay the minimum charge. Um, we do require dumpsters, renters to call it in to get it dumped. We don't do it automatically unless it's at the time when we pick it up. Um, we do, for the safety of all the individuals involved, make sure that everything stays within the confines of the dumpsters, and you know, we have to have times when people pile things on top, and that's, it's unsafe for our staff and our equipment, it's unsafe for the people, frankly, so uh, we don't wanna make, we wanna make sure people understand that. Uh, we do deliver to the front of the, the, the street in front of the residence or business, um, and we pick up at the street level. If someone chooses to move that, it's on them to get it back there, uh, which has, has been an issue before too, because if you load it down, sometimes it gets a little too heavy. And then one of the things we, we've got here is to reserve the right to, to deny dumpster rental based on availability of dumpsters, and then if you're not in good standing with us, um, you know, your, your bills are not in, in good standing, then we reserve the right to, to potentially deny it for that service as well, so. Uh, we have the, the rental rates, which are set, uh, with the ordinance that you just passed. Um, so this just gives us a little bit more direction as to how to handle dumpsters, which is something that we've never really had, so uh, we're, we're looking for, uh, we're looking for approval of this policy municipal one-on-one.
Related question? We've had dumpsters parked on the road, on this, on the, on the road, obviously.
Right.
Residential areas. It seems like at night those aren't always easy to see when you're driving.
Yeah, we do set cones. Um, sometimes people move our cones, sometimes those cones go missing. Um, that's one of the ways we try to draw attention to it. We could also put some reflective material on there, like tables or something. That would be an easy fix, yeah.
Cause I know that, you know, you can't park a trailer on, on a residential road either, without it attached to a tow vehicle.
Right.
So it seems like a dumpster seems a lot like an, an attended trailer when driving, consistent, that is. But yeah, I'm, safety is what I'm concerned.
Yeah, no, I get that.
Washington. Over there by Tabor.
That's not necessarily something we need to add to this policy.
Absolutely not, it's just a related question.
Yeah, right, but I mean, it's something we can do to the dumpsters to increase their ability to be seen.
Sure.
Hey. Great suggestion, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, accepted a motion to uh approve municipal policy one oh one regulating rental dumpsters.
Second.
Councilman by moves, councilman McCarty seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And our next item is another ordinance thirteen seventy-six, adopting the twenty twenty-three standard traffic ordinance, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, this is something that we do every year, um each year when the state goes through, uh they make changes to certain sections of, of both the standard traffic ordinance and the Uniform Public Defense Code, it's a way that we can update those things if we adopt the latest addition and make sure that we're consistent with the, the way the laws are now written and what is uh currently in, enforced throughout the state, so. Uh like I said, we do this about this time every year, um and Andrew's put together a list of uh a memo regarding any of the changes in there, several changes. Uh most of which are, most are usually definitional uh kind of things, but there are some, there are some things in there, people getting moved and such like that, so. Um I would, I would defer any specific questions to Andrew, but uh the S T O is, is in that ordinance thirteen seventy-six, and then we'll have its companion ordinance thirteen seventy-seven, which is the Uniform Public Defense Code.
Also known as U-Poc.
U-Poc.
Not U two, U-Poc.
Like a combination of two and two pockets.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen seventy-six, which is adopting the twenty twenty-three standard traffic ordinance. And authorize the mayor to sign, are you good with that too?
Yeah.
Very good, okay. Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh we will pull council, councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman by.
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen seventy-six is hereby adopted, the mayor will sign. Item four is his companion ordinance thirteen seventy-seven, adopting the twenty twenty-three Uniform Public Defense Code. Mr. Styles, I don't know that there's any additional information, would somebody care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Councilman by moves, is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council, councilman by.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Lowen.
Yes.
Councilman Driggers.
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen seventy-seven is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Uh we are now on to a resolution, authorizing the establishment of a Kansas State Municipal Investment Pool Account, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, so Danielle and I met with Greg Barnberg, who's our uh financial guru, our, our advisor, I guess. Um uh and to talk a little bit about our idle fund investment strategy, right now, we just have kind of our, our basic accounts, we have our checking account, which they all draw interest, but uh you know, we have a, a lot of money in our central national account, usually around two and a half million. Uh and right now, we're getting four percent interest, which is great, that's, that's awesome and you know, generate, generates roughly ten thousand dollars a, a month in interest, which is really good, uh but we were interested to see if there are other options out there, um now investment of idle funds for a municipality is, is pretty tightly controlled by statute. Um so there's not, there're not a ton of options and you can't go invest it in the stock market directly or anything like that, but um we've decided to talk with Greg to see sort of what he was thinking on, on, on what would be out there, and he, he said, well, treasury notes are, are some option, but then you have to get into some other types of things where you're buying instruments, um with Kansas municipal, the Kansas State Municipal Investment Pool is an option for us, it's specifically outlined in statute as an environment that we can put our money in, um you know, they have different kind of categories of where you can put your money as far as the timeline you're willing to invest it in. Uh we would look at that one to eighty-nine day timeline, because we wanna keep it as liquid as we can. Frankly, the rate in there is, is not, you know, investing in longer term and tying it up isn't that much better, uh we're not gonna gain a whole lot out of that. Uh but right now, as of, when I wrote this on Friday, uh five point three three percent, so a full one, one point three three percent higher. Uh which, you know, over the course of, over the course of the year, it could end up being, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars more in interest and just taking a portion of our funds and reinvesting them there. Um important thing with this is that we're just essentially moving it, it, it works like a, another checking account for the city, uh or another account for the city. Uh doesn't affect the budget, doesn't impact anything like that, it's just we're taking some of our idle, idle funds and moving them into a different account. Um we think Danielle and I think one, one and a half million is a pretty safe amount based on kind of how we spend money. Um and so what we're, what we're looking for today, uh if you want to join the Kansas State Municipal, Municipal Investment Pool, uh they have a pretty specific resolution, uh which is what you have for you, it outlines who can, who can access the account, who can do those things, who the primary people are, uh it's it's kind of their way or the highway as far as how that goes, and I, I don't know if there's anything particularly challenging about it, or we would wanna try to change, so. Uh what you would be doing then would be authorizing the creation of this account for the city of Hillsborough, um and then we would Danielle and I would, uh yeah, under your direction, uh would look to move some of that money in there and invest that and try to gain. No, we would leave, we, we, we feel pretty comfortable with a million and a half, that's about where we think we would be able to gain some on it and still, we would, we wouldn't put it in past thirty days, we really don't wanna get out past a month, um which is, is probably conservative, but I'd rather be that way than not. Uh keeps the cash liquid and you know, our billing cycles typically are thirty days.
Are you going to choose how long it's in there?
Well, they've got, they've got this one, it's a one to eighty-nine day, so it's, you know.
No one feels to me like you could ask for it.
You could, you could get it immediately.
Okay, so you're a day out if you, if you need to move it back to.
Well, probably a day or two, yeah, depending on how it works. Yep. So we're not really putting it at risk, we're just moving it over so that we can gain another one point three percent in interest, which we feel like you know, it's, it's a safe way to do it and it's pretty, why not, why not take the advan- take advantage of a higher interest of environment, so.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to adopt resolution authorizing the establishment of a Kansas State Municipal Investment Pool Account.
The move.
Councilman Driggers moves, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would uh ask for a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Now, my least favorite item on the agenda.
Spend the, spend the money you just made.
Right, very much, yeah.
Roof for the AMPI fire storage, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, this one, this one really gets me too, uh so we, we've been, you know, obviously we've got a new fire truck and our new brush truck, we wanted to make sure that we're taking care of that equipment, but we've developed some leaks in the AMPI building, so this is, this is on the uh east side of the main building. Uh it's a backup, it's a loading dock, used to be loading dock, so it's got five bays in it. Um and we've had, had issues with the leaking. Uh and so we had Mahaney come out, they've done a lot of work for us in the past and uh they've done a lot of work on AMPI in the past, which is also something that you hate to invest in, knowing that we're planning that we are going to be moving into a new fire station at some point in the future, but uh we have a pressing concern now, so. Um what they're planning on doing there, there's skylights in this section of the building, so they would remove those skylights, um cap all that, seal up about a hundred and fifty feet of edge on the roof and parapet, there's some E B, E P D M membrane that needs to be reattached, that's that picture, um that last picture there. Where that around that, yeah, or that is, there's the final picture, set of pictures in there.
Oh.
Yeah, it's torn and uh that's where water's getting in, so. Um yeah, I hate to make an investment in this building, I really do, but uh at this point, we wanna make sure that we keep our equipment in good shape.
Yes.
Um and the good news is, if and when we build the fire station, this, this will be put to use with other equipment, we'll use other for other storage, so it's not like it's a one and done kind of thing, and you know, three years from now, we're gonna be looking back thinking, why did we spend seventeen thousand on a roof, but uh this, you know, the plan would be to, to take care of it now and then in the interim, one, until we get the fire station built and then we'll move some of our other equipment in there.
Any questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to uh, to approve the bid from Mahaney Group in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred dollars to repair the roof at the AMPI building.
How soon would they get on it?
They're pretty busy right now with all the storm damage, um but they're usually within a week and a half, two weeks, so I, yeah, I would, I would think by the end of this month, they'd be on it.
We have a motion by councilman McCarty, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, she carries. We're on to item seven, which is designation of voting delegates for the twenty twenty-three L P M Annual Conference, Mr. Styles.
Uh yeah, so the city, uh we've got four folks signed up, myself, Danielle, uh Blake and, and Lou to go and represent the city at the conference, um based on the city's population, we get two votes in the official annual meeting. Uh in order to utilize those votes, we have to designate two people to do that, and we also have the option to designate two alternates, uh like last year, we're recommending that uh councilman by and, and count, mayor Thurston are the, the delegates that would be voting delegates and then uh Danielle and myself would be named as alternates.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to uh approve the selection of Mayor Lou Thurston and Councilman Blake By for our city voting delegates and name city clerk Danielle Bartle and administrator Matt Styles as voting alternates.
Make a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second? Councilman Lowen seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And I almost wanna apologize, but we're gonna talk about our budget again. Mr. Styles.
Yeah, this is the last bite at the apple, uh before the public hearing, we'll have that scheduled for the uh September fifth, which is the after, our next meeting, day after later. Um just wanted to put it back in front of you yet again, if you have any questions, concerns, comments, um now would be the time to change it. Uh we've published a hearing notice and so you, you could not, um you could not change the mill levy up, but you could always amend it down at the final final thing, um so in preparation for next, next council meeting, we'll have a, a revenue neutral rate hearing and then we'll follow that up with a budget hearing. Uh you have to approve a resolution with regards to revenue neutral rate and then you have to formally adopt the budget, so. Nothing's changed, this is the same budget we've looked at the last three meetings, I just like to make sure that everybody is fully aware and have plenty of looks at it, so.
Any questions? Okay. Hearing none, we're gonna move on and go to your report, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir, uh so yeah, just a couple, we've got a couple things going on, um Tabor, welcome back. Uh Mr. Krapp has mentioned it, but uh the mayor was like a one man welcome wagon out there, uh greeting freshmen. Uh I was a wingman for one of those days and could keep up with them a little bit. Uh but yeah, that's one of the things we've been doing in the last two years is to welcome freshmen in, it's, it's a lot of fun.
It's great, I love it.
I gotta think some of the kids from big cities are a little shocked.
We had to, we had one, we had one, one of the uh, one of the freshman girls and I went up and I, I introduced myself as Mayor Lou and she kind of looked at me and, yeah, and, and uh Karen uh Jansen was right behind me and she goes, no, no, really, he's the mayor. And she goes, oh, 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 I'm so sorry, and then she goes, and she goes. Which, yeah, we just, we kind of cracked up with that, so that was fun, yeah, it's you know, and, and I, and I try to assure the parents that are dropping their kids off, especially those freshman parents, you know, that we're gonna take good care of their kids and you know, Hillsborough's a good place to be and a good, safe place for them to be, so. Yeah, so, okay.
It's been, it's been really, it was, it's a good time. Uh and following day on, on the twelfth, uh well, following after one of our freshman meetings. Uh we had the block party out here as part of the cruise night and the movie night, uh I think it went really well, I had a lot of real positive comments, we had a watermelon eating contest, which was fun. Uh the winner had thirteen, thirteen chunks in five minutes.
And she was, she was huge.
She dominated, and the, the, the second place winner had twelve, but he was a ta- uh tied in for the football team and he just couldn't believe he got beat. Uh it was, it was fun, uh we had a lot of fun with that, we had an inflatable out there that didn't quite work out, but that was about the only thing. Um and then people kind of moved on to the, the movie night and it was good, and then the uh fire department, they went, uh the freshmen went back to campus and they had a color war, which is where they throw soap powder and stuff on each other, it's a mess and.
Oh, I wonder why my niece looks.
Yeah.
Stop.
That would be it, yeah.
Yeah.
And the fire department was out there and they sprayed, you know, they had the sprinklers out and running stuff, so it was, it was a good time. Um one of our newer firefighters, Trent Jones, is, is also a Tabor student. And he got to, one of the things they have to do as part of them joining the department is to climb the ladder, so we had the ladder deployed. Uh and all his buddies were having a good time with him climbing that ladder and shooting them with water, so uh really good time, we're, we're always excited to have all the kids back, um you know, it's it's, it's uh just a little bit quieter in the summertime, but now, now it's, we're back into it and so uh we're excited about that. Uh storm damage, not as much fun, um we've been working on our insurance carrier, we've had the airport hangar down since July fourteenth. Uh I got a call this afternoon, they finally have come to an agreement with the roofing companies with regards to what actually needs to be done. Um the original roofing bid was a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, which I about fell out of my chair.
Like they wanted to build a new building?
Yeah, you could have built a new building for that, and so I, I completely agree with the adjuster that that was out of line, so. Um they came back this afternoon and it was, uh they, they agreed on twenty-eight thousand seven hundred, which makes a lot more sense. I don't know, ask me, I don't, I don't know all the, I don't know all the, the negotiation there, um so there's, you know, that building was built in ninety-one, um it's on replacement value. They're, they're treating it as a repair, so they're gonna do that, they're gonna honor the, the twenty-eight seven. Uh we do have a ten thousand dollar deductible, so we'll have to pay the ten thousand on it, but we'll get that roof repaired out there. Um but I think we need to have kind of broader discussion about the airport in general, just you know, it's i- it's a wonderful service and I understand the importance of it for, for his community, but it's gotten narrower and narrower in its use. Uh and it costs, you know, it, it continues to increase in cost, so um we may wanna think about how we wanna treat that in the future and if I'm not saying we should get rid of it or, you know, but I, I don't know about putting a lot of money into it. Um the, the one thing that is really important about it is that that is where we would land a fixed winged plane if there was an air ambulance situation. Um most of the time they use helicopters now, but there is still occasion where that would be an option, so. You know, there's things to think about there, uh we, we don't make money on rental, uh we don't really make money on fuel, uh we don't move enough of it to really do anything, so. Uh we're subsidizing it, but you know, maybe, maybe that's something we need to think about in the future.
Few years ago, we had the engineer come out and report on what it would take to to increase the runway length so that
Oh.
that planes could really land here, other than the little tiny things.
Yeah. It's a big investment, I'm sure.
Big investment, but at the same time, his claim was basically that you know, the small planes that land there, can land there now
Yeah.
are, are gonna go extinct sooner or later. So.
Probably fair.
Yeah, he, yeah, he was talking about like a twin engine, something that was a little bit bigger. Yeah. Definitely won't get along enough to land jets, but I mean.
No.
Is there any, anything that would stop from privatizing the hangar? Like if somebody wanted to hang, like if they wanted a hangar or they want, instead of having to rent.
If they wanted to build it or buy it or.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause I've seen, I've seen that in, in the city where part, part of the hangars might have been owned by the airport or the city and then the other part were private hangars.
Yeah, yeah.
At least get that off your, off of your maintenance slash.
Maintenance part. That, the building is probably, the hangar is probably the main, shared hangar is probably the worst.
Yeah.
Piece. Um.
Cause I mean, you, you were expressing landing, uh you know, a plane for an ambulance or whatever, that
Hmm.
you could keep the runway.
Right.
As part of the city and we would.
Yeah, the runway, runway and lights, all the, all the
Right.
equipment related to that, you certainly would wanna keep that moving, but and some of the, the complicating factors that some of that stuff, the controls for that are stored in that can, that hangar, so. You'd have to work out a way to kind of.
Sure.
To divide that out, but uh yeah, there would be nothing stopping you from privatizing those. Yeah, it would just be, that would be an option to think about. So yeah, that's the airport, we will get that, uh again, little So, yeah, that's the airport. We will get that. Uh, again, that'll be, we're going to be coming out and do that work. So I expect to see them starting by the end of the month. Once everything gets processed through EMC, which is usually pretty quick.
Any idea how many planes actually land there a month now?
Uh, we do, we have a log that people voluntarily sent, uh, put information in, but I don't have. You know, a formal count, there's not really that. I, I would guess it's not a lot.
No, I don't either.
That's not.
But you know, I used to pick up blood there, used to pick up medicine. Sometimes I needed it, so it does come in handy when you need it.
Yeah, there's certainly value to it. Um, it's just a matter of how we balance that value versus their cost, yeah. Um, some better news. Uh, H four C, the, the childcare center was on uh cake news on August third. Um, Tristan Cope, who's the board chair, was representing the, the um center and then the mayor appeared on the segment two. Um, great exposure for this childcare center, great project. Good to see Wichita TV station out here for a positive reason. Um, you know, you, you can find that if you want to go back and look at it and see how well uh the mayor did with that. You can go and check that link out. Tristan did a great job too.
She sure did.
Yes. And next, next week, we're going to, uh, Tristan and I are going to the Cosmosphere to receive the. The big check from the, from the governor, so uh that'll be, that'll be fun too. Uh, Planning Commission Marion, they've sent testimony out. Uh, we sent them testimony with the, their proposed notification language changes. Uh, we actually did request they consider not, not formally consider a proposal for extraterritorial, extraterritorial jurisdiction, but. Kind of feeling the waters to see if they'd be receptive to that. Uh, they weren't really prepared to do anything with that at this time, which I didn't really expect anyway. Um, but they did move forward with their, their notification things, which I don't think is a problem. I think it's actually good to formalize some of that stuff. Um, and then they're moving forward to, to the county commission with that. Um. We were looking for some kind of support to see if you, they would support the ETJ because it is a lengthy process and. It would be bad to go through everything and then have them just thumbs down it for the whole thing, so. Um, but we'll still work with Sharon on that. Sharon's the uh planning, planning person over at the county and see if we can. Kind of feel that out a little bit more, so might not be dead, which may have to rethink how we're going to approach that. Uh, update on some of the hiring things. Jesse mentioned, uh, Dwayne McCarty's starting. I think he starts next Monday. Uh, we have said, had several applicants for the Director of Parks and Recreation job that we revised at the last meeting. Uh, we're going to review those on the eighteenth. Um, hoping to have that hired by the end of the month. We'll see. Um, and then sanitation worker, we've been, had fewer applications. We didn't interview one person. Um, excellent candidate. We just were way off on, on the money part of it, so it wasn't going to work that way, so. Uh, we're continuing to look for that one. That one's going to be a hard one. It's a CDL position, which has gotten really hard to bill. Um. Uh, we'll, we'll keep looking and we are willing to train somebody if we had the right person, so. Uh, we'll, we'll see that, how that goes. Um, health insurance savings report for July is the first month of the new rates. Uh, we netted, netted a savings, pretty good savings of seven thousand nine seventy-seven. Uh, compared to what, what we would have paid with a fully funded Blue Cross Blue Shield plan. Um, claims are still pretty good at ninety-three thousand, so everything's moving forward even with the, the higher rates. Uh, sales tax report with receipts for July's distribution, so we're slightly ahead now for last year. Last year, of course, was a banner year, the best year we've had. Um, and we're holding right on to that, so we're anticipating that to, to continue forward, so. Uh, and that is all ahead, sir.
Okay, any questions? Um, are we, have we picked up all the branches? Have we done? Cycle rip, going back to the storm damage.
Yeah.
Conversation. We've made a couple of different swings through town, have we not?
Yes, we have.
And uh, we, I think we really tried hard to let people know, so.
Yeah, we pulled, we pulled a lot of trees out of lines. Um, the last one. Uh, of course, we've had three kind of successive storms, which is really. That puts a lot of stress on, on the electric department and the street department too, because it takes a lot of work to go around and pick those up. Um. We're hoping for better weather.
Well, I appreciate the crews getting out and doing that and, and that's been done in some, not some pleasant weather.
Yes.
So heat wise.
Yeah, the heat has been pretty bad. This last day's been beautiful, but.
All right, so then barring any other questions, we'll move on to our final public comment opportunity. Is there anyone that would care to address the council? Okay, we will close that and we will move to council comments. Councilman Bye.
Nothing to knock on.
Councilman McCarty. Councilman Lowen.
I just want to say thank you to Andrew for making those uh two. Uh, what do you call it? Proposal?
Yeah, the.
Summaries.
Summaries, yeah.
Yeah.
This, that was well done. It was easy to read and appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay, um, just a couple of comments that, that, that I would have and I would. Like to thank the uh Matt and Danielle and all the city staff that helped put together our dedication of the Aquatic Center. And uh, we had a great turnout, I thought, for that, uh, that event and it was a. A distinct honor to uh, to um memorialize Dolores in that way and. I, I know the family appreciated it. I heard back from Matt and, and he uh, he definitely uh was very appreciative and thankful for. For what we've done and I'm looking forward to seeing the signs, both for Larry at the splash pad and for Dolores at the, at the swimming pool, but uh. Um. That was all the extra ravenous comments that I have. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.